Bring us online. Hey, look at that. You get the microphones up, right? Good evening, welcome to the April 1st, 2014 meeting of the planning board. Call me into order with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do a roll call of members. Mike Caparilio, present.
Tom Young, vice chair.
Russell Blanchett, member, present.
Kevin Ballack, present.
Absent today is Bob Curtis, Joel Kalpelson, and Mike Kretu. We have any public input this evening? Hearing see none, we'll move on to the first item, which would be the work session for impact fee ordinance draft. So, I'm gonna pull that up. I think with Jen's guidance, we're gonna tackle it in pieces today. And these comments in here, are these mostly you, or are these Mr. Mayberry? Are these all Mr. Mayberry?
A little bit of everything.
Okay.
So, what you have, to kind of rewind to two years ago, we had made a first pass effort at taking the public capital facilities impact fee ordinance and the school impact fee ordinance and merging them together to be one single ordinance. Because a lot of the language was redundant, duplicative, and it was not necessary to have two separate ordinances. So, that's the first batch of edits that are here. The second batch of edits are the board's review from two years ago after we did that attempt at merging the two documents. So you still have some comments from that point in time that are just kind of some notes in the margin. Now, on top of that, I've added and marked this draft up based on the comments that Mr. Mayberry had sent in a separate memo. He had typed up some comments and suggestions that he had for the draft. So, rather than try and go between two separate documents, I've tried to merge his comments in here, which is why it started to get really frightful looking.
Okay.
And then on top of that, Jason Hope went through Mr. Mayberry's comments and added some comments as well. So I've merged those in here as well. So, those suggestions that they had that were very, very straightforward suggestions, I've gone through and just made some quick edits. But otherwise, by and large, where they're suggesting a larger, more conceptual change, I've just included it in the margins so that the board can go through and think about how they want to address some of these different suggestions. This is dense, there's a lot. And since it's been two years, I would recommend just starting at the top and working through all of the, either the edits or the comments. Lastly, I'd actually want to start by jumping towards the end.
Just a quick question, when you have paragraphs that are all pink but no comment areas, are those paragraphs that were just merged from the other document? Like if you go 11300.03c, is that because it was from the school side and you merged it together? Or is that not how it's looking now?
No, actually, all of 1300.03,
Yep.
It's one really large comment.
Okay. So I thought it is commented on, isn't pink, or?
Hmm.
And I thought it's commented on, is in pink or salmon or whatever that is?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I wanted to jump to one of Mr. Mayberry's comments that I just pasted in at the end as opposed to, as a word bubble, and it's on page 10. And so this was just something that's good to have in the back of your minds as we talk about this or even to discuss before we get into the nitty gritty. And after going through and providing comments on the whole ordinance, Mr. Mayberry suggested essentially scrapping, reorganizing, and rewriting. So the approach that you would take to get to this reorganized proposal would be to repeal and replace in whole. It would be a cleaner approach. If we get to the point where we're looking at this and every other word is an edit, it may be easier to simply repeal and replace because it's gonna be confusing enough for us to look at and read it as track changed or the edit for, you know, underline and strike throughs. Somebody that you're presenting this to at town meeting is gonna look at that and their eyes are gonna cross. So that's just one thing, one consideration to keep in mind. We can keep working in track changes for now so that you know what we currently have versus what's changing. But if we start going to this recommendation that he has of a reorganized essentially outline for this ordinance, you're gonna see entire sections picked up and moved. And in that case, it's...
But the repeal and replace, you'd still have to have public hearings for both sides and it still goes to the ballot? And if one passes but not the other, then what, is it contingent on?
You would do repeal and replace as one single warrant.
As one, okay. So otherwise, it stays separate as two items, school and town? Or we, if you vote no, it stays the way it is now?
Right.
And all the changes we've done are not reflected in the two-way version because we're not touching that?
Right.
So all the work is for nothing?
Either way, it'd be one warrant article.
Yeah.
Because you'd have, to merge, you'd have the one article that would say, make all of these edits to 1300 and repeal 1400.
Okay.
So, it wouldn't make sense to make the edits the way we have it without repealing the schools piece anyways. So, otherwise, then you'd have two conflicting ordinance.
So it'd be a cleaner presentation to the voter if we had a repeal and replace? Because it's just, it's not...
It might be.
Arrows everywhere.
It might be.
But the content's the same content.
Yes.
It's just presented differently.
It's just saying, we're just gonna scrap what we have, adopt a whole fresh new.
Yep.
And that would really be, like, I think where we're at right now, if you kept the same organizational structure that you have right now, you wouldn't necessarily need to go the repeal and replace route. It's if you start that reorganization and change, you know, and take this piece and this piece and move them over here and...
But aren't we doing that by combining both into one?
No, because they, they're...
1300, 1400, so...
They're almost identical.
So they're in one ordinance as opposed to two separate places, but the content, 1300 is one group, 1400 is the other group?
Yeah, and essentially, the only difference between 1300 and 1400, the way they currently exist, is you've got identical text between the two. And 1300 says, "public capital facilities," and 1400 says, "school facilities." And that's it.
And Mr. Mayberry suggests that we go this direction? In terms of an ordinance that's easier to follow and all in one spot?
Yes, because part of the point that he makes and that he's tried to include as he went through and provided his comments was that Litchfield's ordinance, like several other communities in the state, was adopted prior to what we currently now have in statute. And so there was a lot of justification, purpose, statements, bindings, and other really foundational items included in the ordinance because the statutory language wasn't there.
Okay.
So now what he's saying is, what is here is obsolete and unnecessary because now you have those statutory provisions that provide that direction to the municipality that you didn't have previously.
So we're covered in other areas, so it doesn't have to be duplicated here?
Right. And the main thing that he suggests that has now become obsolete is a lot of the findings. Just because the findings are very much so, so this is like we're starting in here on page one, are very much so something that is applicable at the time that they're drafted.
Mm-hmm.
And they are certainly not as applicable today as they were when they were originally drafted, just given a lot of economic and other changes that have happened. So, that's one piece where he says, by and large, you can do away with. Another thing that he suggests, just as a simplification and clarification, is you now have in statute clear definition of of what your capital facilities are, or what public capital facilities are. And so, he suggests, don't distinguish even between public capital and school facilities. School facilities are included as part of your public capital facilities by definition. And so that's another just terminology change that he's just making throughout just to simplify and be more consistent. So this is some of the kind of like big overarching elements.
So should we hit it by paragraph? Is that the most practical way?
I suppose so.
We all ready?
I'm ready. Are you ready?
Go.
Well, if we just hit 01 first, I mean, that's pretty, authority's pretty straightforward because that's a legal term, so there's probably not much we need to adjust there, I would think. Or is there?
No, the only thing I would mention though is just that anything that's in red text is either new or deleted. I think this revision, I did these a couple weeks ago, I'm just adding Mr. Mayberry's in. This added sentence to the authority section is coming from suggestion from Mr. Mayberry just to kind of make it broader, because then later he reduces some of your language elsewhere. So this is more just a...
It also starts it...
...up your authority statement.
Defining that it's both the town and the school.
Exactly.
So you define it from the beginning, so let's see whether that's a bad thing.
Exactly.
If anyone does.
No, I have no problems.
02, almost done. Why would you take out "be consistent with the master plan"? Because isn't that what the whole town's supposed to follow?
Yes. Again, this was a Mr. Mayberry suggestion. I think what he was looking to do is render things generic enough so that if you ever update your master plan prior to making amendments to any ordinances, you're not stuck in a limbo situation where you no longer match directly. That said, he's saying, you really want to put the focus on that it's, the intent of the impact fee is really to implement the master plan. And so that's more where the focus is.
So it's inferred if you implement the master plan, you're being consistent with it because you're implementing it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Sometimes your master plan won't be as detailed as what you would need for, what you would be programming impact fees for. It's gonna be a little bit more generic.
And CIP helps fill in the missing parts of that.
Again, with the focus on implementing those. That said, you certainly can leave the "consistent with" in there if you...
I just, personally, I just wanted to make sure, and if it's implemented, it's consistent with it because you can't implement it without following it. So it is like an extra word, I guess.
Yeah.
So, as long as legally, I'm not looking the right way, but...
We can keep it.
You don't need to.
No, I think we did fine. And he added, including public school facilities in C, just, I know we just said a school is a public facility. Is that just to be overly cautious but specific? That includes school also in one document?
Um, yeah, and let me...
Because it is all public, I mean, a different town doesn't own our schools, we do. So, it's redundant unless it's a clarification that you're better off having it.
I'm just gonna pull up the old version, that way I can have handy and know what was previously changed versus changed as a suggestion here.
And just while you're looking that up, quick question from two years ago. What was, nothing was, I was in here two years ago, so nothing was changed, obviously, right? So we looked, it was looked at, but it was tabled, or?
It wasn't even tabled. It didn't even go to hearing. It was a, first draft was worked on and then we said, well, once Mr. Mayberry has some time to start working on his methodologies, then we'll revisit this.
And that's why last year, we had the money set aside to have him do his assessment?
Yeah.
So that was a step two of, and this is step three, combining it all together?
Yeah. Yeah, so that, including public school facilities, was something that, two years ago, we added so that it could go either way at this point. I mean, you could include it upfront in this first section just for the sake of clarifying and making sure that it's obvious. And then, I think it's one of the things that he suggests that it could be a change that's carried through throughout to not then specify or single out the public schools piece.
Okay.
You should see in the rate in the first one anyway.
Right.
Yep.
So I mean...
No ambiguity, it's defined.
It can go either way there.
Yep, I would just keep it. All right, 03A, that's just carrying on with the same, the same gist of it, which is fine.
Well, it also falls into findings, which we may decide to get rid of entirely. Mr. Mayberry suggests getting rid of the findings in the whole 1300.03.
Yeah, predates statutory language. So what's...
I gotta pull up the electronic version here because my printed copy doesn't show my little lines connecting my comment bubbles to the text. All right, I believe, so, comment one goes to 130003A through E. And so, Mr. Mayberry suggested deleting altogether, A through E.
And then again, legally, we're covered in ordinances outside of, outside of the impact fees?
State statute would...
So not our town, but the state overall covers us in A through E?
Right, so the statutes, I think I put on the, did I put a link on the site? May not have. Out of that, I think I may have the link just embedded in one of the comments somewhere. If you want the... That's vested. I didn't include a hyperlink directly to the impact fee statute. If you want them, I can get you all there so you can see what...
I mean, so A through E are specifically mentioned, or the context of what they cover is mentioned?
Yeah, so if you look at B, I mean, that one's directly referring to the statutory provisions.
Yep.
But bottom line is, what's now there in statute and has been for a while now are those guidelines for what an impact fee is appropriate to be used for and how they're to be used. And, you know, a lot of this has been codified in statute now.
If someone challenges a statute, the statute protects what we have in here because it's a state law. You don't say there's a court challenge for impact fees?
Right, so, New Hampshire being a Dillon's rural state means that a municipality can only do what it's allowed under statute.
Okay.
So the statute provides that framework. In some instances, the statute will say that a municipality may adopt more restrictive requirements.
And in this case, it just mimics the statute? In terms of what we'd be deleting? So we're covering ourselves from the statute perspective?
Right, and essentially, the findings, these were the justification that the town used to adopt an impact fee ordinance in the first place. So these weren't necessarily applicable to the applicant. They were saying, listen, we as the town of Litchfield have the right to adopt an impact fee ordinance, and here is why. So this was the town protecting itself and setting its own justification.
And now that the state statute has all that spelled out, it's redundant to have it in our ordinance?
I'm fine taking A through E.
Right.
I agree.
Okay.
And then F through H, he suggests moving...
Just so the whole findings category can be deleted?
Yeah, so the, exactly. Findings would not be a category, and these items that F, G, and H would become...
1309?
1309, and it'd be... Oh, he had another in his memo title for this related to the administration of the impact fees. Review and establishment of fees here.
So in this document, it's not moved to a new section? So are we better off addressing those letters individually and then deciding to move them? And then create a new section and then just prove it after? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you want us to go to F? You wrote "as revised" for the comment two?
Yes.
So what's that?
That's going to the fees established by the impact fee schedule as revised. It was recommended to say, to keep things generic so that each time you revise the impact fee methodologies, you're not caught in a pickle. So one of the things, again, that Mr. Mayberry pointed out in his review is that you have each of your impact fee methodology schedules cited in your regulation or in your ordinance. So administratively, that means each time you complete and update your schedule, or your, not the schedule necessarily, but the methodology for calculating and setting the schedule, you can't use it until you send it to the voters to amend the ordinance.
All right.
What he suggests is essentially what you already do, but then you wait and you insert it into... I don't know if you're waiting until you're putting it in the ordinance, but you have the ability to work with Mr. Mayberry, come up with a new methodology, hold a hearing, and adopt that new methodology.
Without a belt?
As long as the ordinance says...
As revised.
As revised or as amended.
So how, as it's written today, does it say that, as it's written today?
So as it's written today, that's in 1309.
I assume it would be, because that's what we do, right?
The review and establishment of fees. So the first paragraph of 1309 sets out the process by which you're to come up with the methodologies.
Okay. Nope, that makes sense.
So what he's simply saying is just not to reference all the specific individual ones. So it's just an administrative headache to...
Yep. Make consistent.
Make housekeeping edits to your ordinance.
So we're okay keeping or adding "as revised" in?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's wise.
And then basically, one and two under F are just basically reiterating that the schools are combined with the town?
Right, and we, I think where you say the town of, for like, under two, compensating the town of Litchfield and the Litchfield School District, I think you do in those situations need to specify that it's the town and the school district. But in terms of the type of facilities, here we've got public and educational capital facilities. I would not, I would actually not include the educational since the definition is proposed to be revised.
I'm sorry, are you on two still, or are you beyond two?
One.
Oh, you're on one?
One and two.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the definitions, hold on. Oh my goodness, the lines aren't here, it's gonna make me nuts. All right, so, I just wanted to refresh my memory there on the notes on the definition. So, jumping ahead,
Yep.
because this is one of those recommendations that kind of carries throughout the whole thing. Mr. Mayberry had suggested just calling them public capital facilities. Don't say public and educational capital facilities. Don't, you know, don't do, public capital facilities and school facilities. He was saying it's not necessary. By simply revising the definition of public capital facilities to include the school district, then you're incorporating both pieces. And then, he recommended not pulling forward the definition for school facilities, which was in the school facilities impact fee ordinance that we lifted from there and dropped in here. That was one of the recommendations he had, just to simplify and remove words. Generally, how do you want to, that's a terminology choice. I mean, it's right there in F1 and in F2. It would carry through the entire ordinance. We can kind of tackle that terminology change here on page one, and then I'll just carry it throughout and we won't discuss it further. How you want to just...
But the only change you made was adding, was the red underlines, right? Adding "and" to "educational," and "Litchfield School District and educational."
Yeah.
So it's just defining it one step deeper, which...
Right, so based on the proposed revisions to the definition, a public capital facility would include schools. So you wouldn't need to include the additional "and..." Um, so you wouldn't need to include the additional and educational. You can, but you wouldn't need to.
But someone would have to go to definitions to understand that as opposed to reading the ordinance.
Well, part of that, though, is why upfront, we.
Definition's on top.
Authority, we said it's town and school.
Okay.
So I mean, that's, if you're gonna read it, you're gonna read it from the beginning. So it's just extra verbiage just in there.
And did Mr. Mayberry add that in or is that what's, who did?
That's from two years ago. That's our zippering of ordinances.
And what his comment is, we don't need it because we have it in the definitions.
That's when we were trying to combine the two together.
Yep.
And we weren't sure what we had to do.
And we were being very literal.
Okay. I'm fine striking it if we reference it in the beginning of the document, so then you go through the whole document, you know it's defined that way.
Okay.
Question G, do you have for perpetuity or forever have to reference every year? I- is that just a legal reason that we do that or is that something?
No, so that was one of the things that just overall he.
I don't think I want to remember Cannon Associates in December.
Spell them out every time.
Okay.
Each time you update.
Well, we're still using the Cannon Associates December nineteen ninety, uh, impact fee schedule, which is why we have Mayberry on.
Right.
Uh, to revise. Because that, that whole thing is just so obsolete now. We keep just applying a cost escalator to it.
I guess the, the bigger issue, the question is, do we keep referring backwards or we just put the most recent one in there?
Um.
We should reference everything that we're actively using. Uh, once Mayberry's report has been, um, adopted by this board, we can get rid of Canon, the reference to the Canon report. Is that right, Jim?
Yes, um, or so keep in mind that this piece would move to section thirteen oh nine. Um, and so the first part of thirteen oh nine sets the methodology for how you come up with these reports. Um, so perhaps you do it as, you know, so that reports developed in accordance with paragraph A above. Um, and then you just don't worry about having to amend your ordinance each time a new re- a report is adopted is another.
Is that just reference of one area?
I think so.
I thought it was, but.
It might be referenced again in thirteen oh nine in the sub paragraphs.
So is that why he added on G or as amended?
No, that was a board suggestion from a while ago.
What happened, or as amended, does that just not give it as? Does it not give it the?
Yes.
Yeah, it's squishy, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we probably should not have that because these reflect very specific documents that are accept.
Mm-hmm.
Accepted by the planning board, right? Or those by the voter, that's the planning board, like Mayberry's.
The or as amended covers you in that interim gap so that, say, you know, in July, you finished up and, um, developed a new methodology or an updated methodology and adopted it. By having or as amended there, then you're acknowledging that there may be amended or updated versions. That you may, you know, town meeting may not have come around yet to be able to incorporate it into the ordinance.
So you would recommend to keep that in? Just to cover in that case? Okay. So are we keeping this in this one spot or are we moving it? You mentioned thirteen oh nine. We could reference up to this spot?
Yeah, so F, G, and H would relocate.
To thirteen oh nine. Okay.
So if you see comment three in the margin.
Mm-hmm.
This is coming from, this is summarizing from Mr. Mayberry, um, and his just general recommendation to not list the reports by title.
What would we list if not by a specific title?
So.
That report.
Right, by, so here's the thing. Thinking about it further, by saying or as amended, you're saying that one of these specific reports has been amended, but it doesn't acknowledge a new methodology that you would adopt. So what he's saying is by listing them by specific title in the ordinance means if that's the way you're acknowledging that report's formal existence as the applicable authority and methodology to be set, then you gotta wait until town meeting for that methodology to become effective and, and be utilized.
What if you say instead of or as amended, say or as created or amended? Then doesn't let you add something else in? Am I breaking the law by doing that?
I don't know.
Okay, your face said something too.
I don't know.
Eye contact.
Um. I would go with Mr. Mayberry that you don't need to list them out, that you don't need to have the specific titles.
So by not listing them out, that you get more flexibility because you're not referring them directly?
Right, and the, it is then, though, incumbent on the town to make sure that those reports are made easily available so that any applicant would know that they exist.
And do we do that now?
Um, I don't know if they're on the website or not.
So if we can maybe put a note just to ourselves?
Yes.
If we delete it from here, that we add it somewhere else?
Yeah, that it would definitely need to go on the or on the town's website. Um, I'm trying to think. If you, um, I gave you some links from the city of Lebanon.
Yep.
So they have their basis of assessment fee schedules and other documents all happily and easily accessible on one page so that if you go to their, their ordinances page, like you guys have an ordinance page and click impact fee, it brings up this whole page, and it gives you all of these documents that pertain to their impact fees. Um, and they ha- they also have worked with Mr. Mayberry, so some of their, um, materials will look very familiar to you.
Okay.
Um, so there they have, they just call it basis of assessment, and that is their methodology, um, document.
Now, who adjustments to the website or are those done by? Is it you?
Nope, it's not me.
No.
Uh, John Brunel, uh.
Okay.
Joan gets them taken.
Does that have to go through the selectmen to do this or can we just say we just want to reorganize a certain way?
Joan just usually gives to, to John her updates that she has. She has one, so what it would be, is it just be one?
Yeah, I think that's a great.
Section of bullets on your existing page.
If you're clicking on impact fees, you should, as an ordinance, you should have everything in one spot that you need to make a decision or to be educated on it. So.
Yeah.
So that's nothing, that's only if we adopt all this or is that something we should change now just to make it more functional for the?
I'd say they should go there now.
I agree.
Um, and then if you have that good practice of making sure that those individual documents are there and available and obvious, um, then there's little benefit to spelling them out individually in the ordinance itself.
Could you email, um, Joan the exact ones that we want together? Just to make it consistent with what Lebanon does or what we're gonna be doing?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I feel better if it's there now so if we adjust this, then we don't forget to have it all put together in one spot.
Yep.
Now Lebanon was the one that had dual combined to one, right? And they've already combined into one, so they've been through this already.
They've already been through this.
But they had similar, because of Mayberry, town and school separate and then.
Yes, and in fact, they had very similar to what you currently have because I think it was the same consultant who drafted their two separate ordinances as drafted. Your two separate ordinances. Huh?
Yeah.
It's already done, right?
Yeah. Um, so I, I do think. I mean, you could, you could, you could go grab Lebanon and, and change city of Lebanon with town of Litchfield and be done with it. Um, but I think that over the years, each town has added their own personality to the ordinances, so I don't know that the, I think there are, you have, each, each has different procedural ways of, of operating, and so doing that, you would, it would.
I think the content.
You try to superimpose a procedure that isn't yours.
I think the content is our content, but I think.
Yes.
The layout and functionality of how they do in the website, you know, if it works for them because it's all in one spot and it hasn't been challenged of where is it, then I don't see why we can't adopt the same structure.
Yeah.
Obviously, the details inside need to be our own, but I, I'm always a firm believer, when you click something and you don't see what you think should be related to what you're looking at, it's annoying. That you have to go back out, go back in, do a search of the website to try to find it, so. Okay, so we're moving F, G, and H to thirteen oh nine? Okay. And H we're keeping as is? I don't see anything that needs to be changed in H.
So are we going generic in G?
And not mention the specific ones?
Yeah.
I say yes if we have it referenced on our website, but what do you?
Yeah.
All right. So let me first get what we currently have to be posted on the website, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so then it's there.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to oh four. Mr. Mayberry is saying to keep it generic, meaning to strike being that specific regarding fire, police, safety facilities in his J C four?
Um.
Is that where he's saying to keep it generic or is he saying somewhere else?
Hold on. Okay, so, yeah, the comment four.
Yep.
All right, that goes to, um, thirteen hundred point oh four B.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yes, so the B, language in B is language that we had come up with two years ago when we were working on this. Um, and what he's saying, um, is that there is, you, the definition of impact fees in statute is very specific as to what you can collect an impact fee for. It's also, though, it also includes many things that you don't currently collect impact fees for. Um, so his suggestion is, again, just keep the ordinance focused on the administrative and functional side of how the impact fee system works, and then use your methodology as your methodology piece that you create as that, that add-on component to do an assessment of whether impact fees are applicable or useful for any of those, um, types of facilities. And so you may say that, okay, right now, yes, it is important that we, in, you know, we do have some, some need that we see in the fire and police, um, domains, but roads, not so much. I'm making things up here. Um, that would, then that would allow you to, through your methodology, defend and justify the need for collecting impact fees for a specific facility type, and it would allow you to update that on a more flexible basis. Um, and as opposed to like, right now, you're collecting impact fees that you're debating whether you even should be collecting impact fees on. Um, and so his, his point is leave your language, um, outside of the definition as just public capital facilities. Um, and then use your, the definition, what I added in, in response was, um, per Mr. Mayberry's suggestion, in the definition section, the definition of what an impact fee is verbatim, and in that definition, it spells out those types of facilities they may be used.
So prestigious question, if, if we adopt this eventually, this goes to the ballot and it's put in place, and say they don't collect school impact fees for the elementary school because enrollment's down. If we then, with enrollment going up in the future, want to collect impact fees, does that go to the voter again or when this baseline's in place, is it the planning board that decides to turn them on?
Then you go through that whole methodology, you've got to do the justification, and you have to adopt the methodology.
But is that done by public hearing only and not a ballot initiative or is that?
Public hearing.
Okay, because so this is the baseline that in the future, we could adjust it if we want to turn something on in the future as long as we could justify why we're doing it.
Right, and so what you're doing here is you're setting out a policy and you're saying to the voters, um, here are the things that we may collect impact fees for. Um, however, the planning board will go through and do this evaluation of whether there is a need to collect those, those impact fees before doing so.
So that's by making it more generic in B, you're not limiting to yourself in case there's some impact fee for something not mentioned the way it's written currently, which I don't think there would be, but you never know.
Right.
Why not make it more encompassing?
Exactly, and that's part of the reason why you want to, um, pull that statutory definition in because then it's, you're putting it out to the voters to say, do you give us the planning board permission to evaluate all of these different facility needs in the community and determine whether an impact fee is needed to, um, help offset the costs of new development?
Okay. So basically, what you're saying is the ital- the definition B gets replaced with the definition, the statutory definition of an impact fee?
Right.
And that's, that's all B then?
Or, or this little paragraph here in comment four, you see the italicized text.
Isn't that the statute definition?
No.
Okay.
No, that would be the, um, replacement text for B.
Okay.
Um, and it would just be, impact fees may only be assessed for public capital facilities for which an assessment methodology has been adopted by the planning board and/or board, board of selectmen. I did the and or just because methodology-wise, needed to double check, but it's actually the planning board, it's all in thirteen oh nine, and that answer was already there.
So it should just be the planning board?
Oh, wait, no, it is both. Hold on.
Because we sent it to the planning.
You send it to the selectmen. The planning board should schedule a hearing after providing, um, pro- proper public notice for the re- review of the fee schedules. The board of selectmen shall act on the planning board's recommendations. So you make a recommendation to the selectmen, the selectmen adopt.
So then both should be mentioned in the, in B?
Yes.
Because both are involved? I'm fine replacing it with the italics paragraph.
Okay, I'll tweak that, though, to better reflect.
For the gist of it.
Process in thirteen oh nine.
Yep, so if it mirrors that, but it's just gonna be in more general terms as long as the methodology substantiated.
And there is an example of why you can't take Lebanon's language and drop it on Litchfield because here, your procedure is set so that it's the selectmen that adopts. There, it's the planning board.
And have we always been ever since nineteen ninety? That's the planning board, selectmen together, is that?
Be my guess.
I believe so.
I don't know.
Frank was here, he would know that. He was on a, he was a selectman since ninety. All right. I think it's good having two sets of eyes looking at a situation too and not just having the planning board decide it.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to C. An interesting little paragraph. Not much to adjust there, I mean.
Yeah, that's down there.
Okay.
Can adjust if you want.
No. I see enough red already. So D is now Ed, so is D Ian D now or are you? So, D is now Ed, so is D Ian D now, or are you?
No, it was, um, so what's there as B?
Yep.
Is new.
Ah, okay.
What's there as C, used to be B?
Okay.
It's just word that decides how to renumber things.
So, this is going to be D?
So, this would, yeah, this paragraph would have been C, and it's now D. Um, and there's a note for it, there's comment five that, on the next page, that pertains to all of what is now D.
So, we don't need it?
Yes.
He likes to delete, huh?
He does. Well, if you look at the Lebanon ordinance, it's about half the length. I mean, it's really short.
The longer it is, the more of a chance of it being confusing.
Yes.
It's just defining phrases. The word person includes an individual, a corporation, or partnership. Are these definitions kind of in the statute anyway? If we're referring back to the state statute, I mean, I assume they define?
Most of it looks like it's already in there, so.
Yeah, most of the definitions are already here. We, we have just a few edits.
In section D?
Yeah, because it goes back to the two thousand, nineteen ninety.
Okay. So, you mentioned why only applicable to this article and not the entire zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this is like, this is generic language that whoever the consult, my guess, my interpretation.
Charged by the page?
My guess is this, this is generic language that whoever was the consultant thought was important that be included in a zoning ordinance, um, in terms of, you know, how do you interpret the ordinance? Uh, and saw that you didn't include these provisions, so said, well, I'm going to at least make it sure it's there and included within the product that I'm providing for the town. And so, plumped it in there. Um, Mr. Mayberry's point is, why is this only applicable to the impact fees and not the entire ordinance? If you're going to have such language like this. Um, and I think his thing was more, the, this is really common sense. You know, things like the phrase used for includes arranged for, designed for, maintained for, or occupied for. Just like little things of, of how you interpret individual phrases.
They must have edited this sometime in the, the late nineties. To put the definition of is in, in there, so you know what is is.
Is that Clinton comment? That was awesome. Do we, is this referenced anywhere else and anything else in the town, or is this the only spot that? I think get rid of it. I, it gets redundant.
I mean, you've got, what does and/or, either/or mean? Seriously, and means and. You haven't mastered an either/or or an and statement.
We're way ahead of the curve though by defining a person to include a corporation, or a partnership, or incorporated association.
Was that in here as well?
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, I'd say get rid of that then.
We don't have a definition of CIP in here yet?
Um, there isn't. We can?
Yeah, comment six says add definition of CIP.
Is that a generic definition through the entire state government?
Probably. Yeah, I'm trying to remember why we added that.
So, we defined the word and, but we didn't define the word CIP? There's two ways to look at it. If you were in this trade, you know what that is, but until a couple of months ago, I didn't know what it was. So, if you're a taxpayer reading this, you should probably define what it means.
Okay.
Just because it saves a question at town meeting too? Is there a generic definition that you could pull, or?
I'll find one.
Okay.
Yeah, there's probably something in statute we can use.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I'd like to see that.
And the more we can lift from, from state statute, the easier it is.
Right, so thirteen oh one point oh four is literally copy pasted from statute. Um, what I'm thinking now is it'd probably be good to reference that language that I lifted.
Yeah, per RSA.
Per RSA, yeah, exactly. Per.
And also, should the RSA ever change?
I was going to say that if the RSA does change, does it automatically go to the new RSA language if you reference it, or if you lift it?
They don't change the numbers.
No, no, if RSA number, if the language in RSA changed, does, and it countered, it goes, does it follow that automatically? Like, do, does the RSA trump this?
Good question, um.
And how often does the RSA content change?
It's actually a good question. We're running into a situation with that with what happened with RECOM.
Oh, okay.
Process of trying to get an RSA change present language in it. But I would assume, I don't know, wait.
If it references?
Yeah, um.
I would think that.
I would think.
It'd stay the same.
The language in your ordinance is the language in your ordinance, but.
And that's what's approved by the voter.
Right, but if you put a piece in there that says, you know, an impact fee per RSA six seventy-four, twenty-one, et cetera, is a fee or assessment imposed, duh, 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 then if there were ever a change to the statutory language, it wouldn't necessarily be, it's not going to automatically be adopted into your ordinance, you'd have to revise it through town meeting. But you could then say, you know, if you're working, you know, with your applicant, or you're working within this framework, say, okay, well, that's how the statute changed, the statute trumps my language. Um, therefore, I'll defer to the statute until I can get it updated, but you'd have to, you'd be stuck in a gray limbo area that you would definitely want to place a call to, to council and say, um, okay, you know, it would, it would depend on what change.
Can you define this, the RSA and say, per RSA, blah, 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 from two thousand fourteen? Bam, and that way, if the RSA beyond two thousand fourteen?
I wouldn't include the year.
But then you're locked into the, but then you, it holds true to the, the meaning of when that RSA existed?
Right, but when the RSA changes, the RSA changes.
It's not like driving.
The previous version is gone.
So, by not, so maybe we shouldn't even mention the RSA then?
Right, so.
If we're going to put that limbo area.
No, I would definitely reference it. Um, so, here's, here's the limbo area, here's some, like, examples. See, all of a sudden, I'm going to throw random hypotheticals out there. Legislature suddenly decided that, no, you cannot, and you cannot collect impact fees for sanitary sewers. So, they struck that out of there. What I would say to you as the town is, even though you include it in your ordinance as something that you can collect an impact fee for, I would stop, I would not collect them. Because it's been unenabled by statute.
So, if it's court challenged?
Right.
You lose.
Right, exactly. The opposite, legislature may suddenly say, we think that towns should be able to collect impact fees for gazebo's. Now, I'm being really ludicrous. But.
We have one already.
Yes, you have one. Um, so, exactly, so just because the statute now says you can collect impact fees for gazebo's, I wouldn't say to the town, I would not start collecting impact fees for gazebo's just because the statute says you can until you put it past the voters. Because now you're broadening the scope of what you might collect an impact fee for. So, for that, I'd say, wait, take it to a town meeting, put it to the voters, and see if they support that.
And that would be an amendment of the ordinance?
Exactly, so, you know, those are your two, those are your two kind of extreme examples. You'd either lose the ability to collect an impact fee for something, or you'd gain the ability to collect an impact fee for something. If you lose it, you simply just stop until then, uh, until you amend the ordinance. If you gain, you simply don't start.
You don't have to do it just because you're allowed to.
Exactly, so I think you lose nothing from being caught in that limbo of a statutory change.
And if this statute does change, do we get, I assume you get, you would know about it?
Generally.
To tell us, okay.
Try and keep track.
Alright, I just don't know if I was supposed to go somewhere and add to my list.
No, in fact, you know, that'd be a good handy thing. I don't know that last year, we did a summary of things that changed, so.
That'd be a good thing once a year, just to.
We can, we can make sure we put that on the, let's, let's make that something that we do this summer. Because legislature will be done June, May. Everything should be signed by the end of June.
Okay.
So, maybe sometime end of June, end of July, we do a.
Legislative update?
Yeah, legislative update. We can very easily do that. It's just a planning board workshop item.
Okay.
In the meantime, I can send you links to where you can find legislative updates from the last couple of years, if you want them.
Okay, so we're going to go back to um, I, I agree that reference the RSA, whatever that number is.
Okay.
Where we pulled it from.
Definition at all, or do we want to just hyperlink to the RSA? Impact fee, RSA six seventy?
If someone has a paper copy of this though, or?
I'd list it out. This is one area where Mr. Mayberry actually suggested.
Expanding it.
Expanding, yeah.
So, there's nothing, well, he can't argue the RSA, so I guess he's as it's written is as it's written, because it's exactly how it's in law.
Copy, paste.
Well, that one's easy. Any other comments on oh four?
You need to go to oh three though. You got a big mar, uh, comment.
There's a big comment.
Seven. There's a whole debate that was going in the, in the comments and notes on this tiny little definition. You've got, you've got included here gross living area. But then immediately the definition calls the gross living area the effective area. So gross living area effective area, net floor area, and gross floor area are terms that all have specific definitions. Your gross living area is not your effective area.
So, gross, effect, gross living area, like a basement, unfinished basement?
So, I would even say that gross living area is a mix-up of terms. Because when you talk about the gross air, let's, let's put the word living air, living aside. So, if you take for a building, the gross area of the building, it's all of the space under the roof.
Footprint times your number of floors.
Exactly, your footprint times your number of floors, regardless of whether it's habitable or not. So, gross and living don't go together. If you wanted to get at your habitable area, the actual kind of building universe term is your net floor area. And that's the area within your gross area that's, that you live in. So, you deduct out your stairwell, and you deduct out your basement, and you deduct out your closets. Um, it's your habitable space.
So, where are we defining effective area then?
Effective area is an assessing terminology, so, um, your effective area is not determined until after your building is built, occupied, and the assessor's been out and, and conducted its assessment. That's when your effective area is determined. So, in terms of procedurally, when an impact fee would be assessed?
It's before that point.
It's before that point.
So, we're contradicting ourselves.
Right, so the, the idea was, is you need something that comes back to when in that process would you assess that impact fee? And it's likely going to be the point when Kevin sees those plans and issues that certificate, certificate of occupancy. Um, and so, in that case, you want to look at either a gross floor area or a net floor area. So, I gave you both. My guess is, is based on the way it's defined here, you're really looking at your habitable space. Therefore, your net floor area opposed to your gross.
Yeah, I think it's more fair.
Yeah, the net would fit it better.
It's, it's define net now, so if you took the word effective out of there?
Yeah.
Is it fine? It mentions assessed values, it mentions habitable space that's heated?
No, you don't want to do it as indicated in the assessment files. But you want, yes, you want includes finished space that is heated, but excludes heated garages and outbuildings. Um, or in the margin, I gave you a couple definitions. The definition here for net floor area, it's a, that's a really generic definition that applies to residential and non-residential structures.
That's what I, I think is the best fit for what we're trying to accomplish.
So, interior vehicular parking is a fancy word for garage?
Yeah.
If it's habitable, it has to have heat, right, so they?
Yeah.
So, that's, yeah. So, you recommend the net floor area definition as written in the, in the margin?
Yeah.
Nope, that's good. So, that'd be striking all of oh three with net floor area definition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Things would have to get reordered to, not too badly, to be in alphabetical order.
But the whole gross living area definition becomes net floor area.
Net floor area.
Yeah.
Okay. You go with zero three? Zero four, we already did, we're going to define the RSA. Zero five defines new development.
We got some comments here in the margins.
So, about the Lebanon definition, it's more the, what you put in and not necessarily the bedrooms. Well, it says living space to existing dwelling unit increases the number of bedrooms. So, we're taking out the number of bedrooms part of it if we go with what Lebanon has.
Yes, this gets back to.
Like, why would you reference bedrooms?
Huh?
Why would you reference bedrooms?
So, this was a whole debate that we had when we were trying to do this.
I missed all the fun.
Two years, yes, you did. This was a, like, hour debate, I think, if I remember right. On what are we, what are we collecting the impact fee on, and what's creating the impact? Is it the space? Is it the number of bedrooms? Is it the size of the house? It's, what if someone does a renovation and expands their house? How do we capture the expansion? So, one of the things that the board was talking about was that it's your number of bedrooms that's directly correlated to the number of children that you create and thus impact on schools. Um, so, that's what the.
Getting to that debate. There's a lot of people today that go out and buy a four-bedroom house and have no kids.
That's true.
Well, how does that impact schools, right? That's how today is.
Yep.
A lot of people are really focused on their careers and not so much kids, so.
But if you look at Mr. Mayberry's data, you see that there are definitely more kids per household in the houses with more bedrooms.
Of more recent vintage.
Of more recent vintage, correct. Um, so, but I think the point here, though, is we need to think back to what the guidance was that you gave Mr. Mayberry on how you wanted to structure that, um, impact fee for residential structures, and it was based on the square footage of the structure as opposed to the number of bedrooms or anything else. Um, in which case, it isn't really applicable. Um, and so the question would simply be, is it the creation or the creation expansion of a dwelling unit? Lebanon is based on
Creation.
Creation. Um, or an increase in the number of dwelling units. So if you were to take, um, for example, a larger home and say, you know what? I'm gonna split it in half and create two apartments in my one, what was a single-family home, then the incremental addition of a dwelling unit would be subject.
So additional bedroom in a current house, a dwelling unit?
So bedroom is not the dwelling unit, it's a dwelling.
So if you add another bedroom to a house to expand your house, you wouldn't be hit with more impact fees because you added one bedroom? A dwelling unit's a standalone.
Right.
Dwelling. So if you build a brand-new house, you're hit with the number of bedrooms you have, but if you build a house and add bedrooms to it, you're not?
No, no, it's just, it's the full, the net floor area.
So then why do we reference bedrooms then if we're into the?
Because that's what the board, two years ago, that's what the board figured.
That was the direction.
So that contradicts.
This is where your children come from, for the school. You increase a bedroom, you have more, you have a child.
So we're contradicting the other sections of this then?
Contradicting your methodology you just, you talked about.
So we have to adjust this.
I, I did. The alternative looks, fits in there a lot better, I think.
Yeah, the only question I have is it just, it doesn't capture expansions. Um, and so i- is that something that should be captured?
In the beginning, we didn't want that expansions, way back in the beginning.
Yeah.
When you say expansions, do you mean expansions of bedrooms or adding a honking living room? Like you have a forty by forty living room?
Kind of addition to the house.
I don't think you should pay impact fees on adding a garage or a living room to your house, even though it's inevitable.
The additional square footage.
Of non-residential.
So if we take a Lebanon definition, that's basically just saying if you add a dwelling unit, it's not carbon expansion though.
Right, so it'd just be the addition of a dwelling unit. You know, honestly, that makes sense.
But that's the purpose of an impact fee, something new.
Right, I agree.
Good job Lebanon.
Alright, so we'll take the Lebanon. Um, for both A and B.
I would say yes.
E is very similar in concept. So use the alternative language.
Yep.
Keeps the symbol. Looking forward to making the next round of revisions.
Looking forward to seeing far fewer.
How are you gonna fit it?
That's, that's the upside of it. Yeah, that's the upside of it. Fortunately, the track changes are just gonna keep getting worse at this point. So.
Turn it off when you view it yet.
So C and D, we're fine with the way it is? That's a non-residential section?
Yeah.
For E, I don't know if this is just the definition of an, but you have one, two, and three, shouldn't it be one, two, or three? Cause.
Ah, this gets at our defining and and or.
Cause no one's gonna be all three of those things. I can understand a natural disaster replacement. I don't know. The way you read it, you seem like you have to qualify for one, two, and three in order to be exempt from it.
Right.
Which should be one, two, or three. If one of the three things happens to you, the chances of all three happening to you are pretty. You got no luck, or a.
It's a bad day.
It's a bad day. So I would just personally just put an or instead of an and, just. It's semantics, but. Alright, will we close out on oh five?
I think so.
Okay, oh zero six, public capital.
So comment ten and eleven, these are residual comments from your conversation on this ages ago.
Aren't facilities and equipment always assets, though? Doesn't asset mean anything of value? So doesn't the word asset automatically cover facilities and equipment? If it's not of value, then it wouldn't be an asset. So I think if you had the word equipment, then you gotta define it, you know. You're defining it, you're making it too specific.
At some point, you reach the end of the amortization of that equipment, and it's no longer a traceable asset, but it's still something that you wanna.
But it's still, yeah, it depends how you define asset, though, cause.
Yeah.
Define it by tax terms, or you define it by functionality?
Yeah. Oh, I've seen comment eleven, how our capital.
So just to give you a comparison, Lebanon's is six pages with giant font with lots of extra space.
For what public capital facilities are?
The, yeah, their whole definite, their whole ordinance.
With big font. I like big font.
Probably read it from there. They do not have a definition of public capital facilities. They have offsite improvements, public open space, and public recreation facilities. But they do have a definition of a school district, which means the Lebanon School District.
Is that odd? You wanna have public capital facilities? Isn't that the whole reason why you have these to begin with is for public?
Well.
Capital?
I think part of it, though, is if you look at the definition of impact fee, which they again also literally cite verbatim from the statute. It has essentially a definition with, it's a, you know, a definition within the definition, um, same as what you have there. It's, it's a fee in order to help meet the needs occasioned by uh, that development for the construction or improvement of capital facilities owned or operated by the municipality, including and limited to. And then it goes on to list what they all are.
I guess my only question would be, why did Mr. Delete not delete this paragraph? Did Mr. Mayberry feel that this was something that was necessary? Cause you're, the comments are from you, right? Not from him?
I tried to just fold his comments, so, um.
Did he seem to think that it was something we should keep a definition of?
Let's see, let me see those here. Those are specific comments. Um, he didn't really have much to say other than some of the edits that I.
Was the equipment edited from him?
So all he said, oh, this keeps going on to the next page. Um, he just said, relative to the definition of public capital facilities to the first sentence after the town of Litchfield ad or the Litchfield School District, in the second sentence of the paragraph, delete the phrase or with facility replacements which do not increase the capacity or level of service.
So he jumped over the word equipment?
Right, so I didn't even make that edit and change. Yeah, he didn't touch the assets, facilities, and equipment. He did not touch that. But he did recommend, sorry, and I didn't catch this. Delete the phrase, or with facility replacements which do not increase the capacity or, uh, or level of service. He suggests deleting.
So your comment of equipment being broad, just to start with the first sentence, are you saying we should not be broad?
That's a comment that the board had.
Been two years ago?
Two years ago.
You have to cut the word facilities. I think assets and facilities basically covers everything that an impact fee would touch. Cause all the schools are facilities. And they're assets.
Yeah, let me.
Town buildings, same way.
And equipment could be an asset.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of i- if there are some instances, um, where you might generally refer to something as equipment.
Like a skid steer for the transfer station. Oh, it's, okay, giant.
It's a workhorse.
That works.
Giant shovel.
Big truck. Sorry.
Well, you smell plows at the end of that.
That's equipment, yeah.
Right.
What if you made it so generic enough that, uh, don't yell at me, but anything that's owned and operated by the town of Litchfield? Or is that just too general?
Maybe too general.
Okay.
Let me do a little research on that.
I'm just literally the word equipment. So did he add in or is defined in the CIP, or is that there already? That was. That's a good question. How are they defined in the CIP?
I need to grab the old CIP, see if there is. That's something that's on the.
It's on the website.
Yeah, but it's also on the agenda to be redone this year, correct?
It is, yeah.
And there's a separate committee that's supposed to be working on that?
I believe the selectmen are out in front of that already.
Alright. So it'd just be something that we'd wanna coordinate?
Yeah, maybe.
Alright, so let's just leave that as a placeholder.
Yep.
Comment bubble as a reminder.
So we leaving the rest of oh zero six as a, for next time? To get clarification on the whole paragraph?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming zero seven, by adding Litchfield School District in zero six, there's no need for zero seven? Was that his comment, basically?
Correct.
That it's redundant?
Yep.
So if we were gonna be consistent through this whole document, then I think we should delete zero seven?
Yeah.
Yes, I would say so.
Cause it flows with everything else we've done?
I had a floating leftover comment here. Asking what is an incremental impact?
Yeah, where did that come from?
I don't remember. I just had this little thing written down in the margins from the conversation. It's no longer an issue or a question?
It points to an empty spot.
It does, cause I didn't have it in reference to any specific piece of the ordinance. It was, I think, just a, kind of a side conversation.
Guess we don't need to worry about that.
There's a hyperlink to the RSA.
Yeah, this is to the vesting statute. Need for.
Thirteen oh two, oh, hey. Do we still have to have those dates in there? It was a long time ago.
I know.
And does it cover schools? If we delete B, does A cover schools, though? Just cause we're one fee schedule, but you list out public library, public recreation.
I think.
Municipal office, public safety. So you define all those, we don't define the schools in there?
It was, um, no, it was the difference or the distinction between A and B is what would re- require an impact fee to be triggered. So only new dwelling units would pose an impact to, um, school facilities. Uh, someone building a new store would not pose an impact on schools. Therefore, an impact fee would not be applicable. So it's, it's setting a different definition or trigger of what would impose an impact fee.
So we're not getting rid of B, we're affirming up B? So still keeping B in there?
B is being pulled from section fourteen hundred.
Okay, that's what's.
Yeah. Mr. Mayberry's comments here specifically. It's just a terminology. Okay, um. So, regarding the vesting piece, um, Mr. Mayberry notes, under paragraphs A and B, there is reference to vesting under RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. Note that the statute at six seventy-four thirty-nine Roman II contains specific language that is applicable with respect to the vesting period affecting impact fees specifically. So, if you go and read that statutory language, it says that applicant is vested from, um, subsequent changes in subdivision site plan or zoning, et cetera, except impact fees. Um, so, my read is that they're not, like, the vesting does not apply to impact fees.
They can still be collected from it.
So, but, you know, the question is, when would that happen, it, you know? I think it's an unlikely situation that you'd have an applicant that would come in.
Or should you affirm it up just in case it does happen, though? And how would you?
Well, you can't, you can't contradict statute. Make a work in here. I don't know that I would even address vesting. Oh, Lebanon, where are you and what did you write?
Is this one section where we may wanna get further clarification before we decide anything?
Okay.
Just like the other one?
We can do a little more research.
As Russ said, do we need to keep the dates in there consistently? We're not having the dates in there because we're referring to, or is that just a housekeeping issue?
Yeah, my guess is the dates were set in there based on when the ordinance was initially adopted. Um, and so, there was probably a clarification that, of when it started or went into effect.
Yep.
So, if you applied before the specified date, then-
So, it's irrelevant now because-
It was twenty-three or four years ago.
I would say just strike the date, cause if anything, it makes you think you have to go back and find something that occurred on that date, which we probably don't have any records of that, besides the initial ordinance being written.
Yeah, if you could just get more information on vesting. I don't think we're in a position to decide how that's gonna be done tonight.
Yeah, that's been-
No.
Alright. Alright, letter C, he just strikes public capital facilities. Is that just for continuity of the document? That's fine. And D, is this your comment to move it somewhere else, or is that Mr. Mayberry, the escalation?
Um, that'd be Mayberry, I believe.
Okay. Do you agree that it doesn't-
I normally flagged it when it was his, so, rather than take credit. Yeah, that was his. Um-
Did he give an idea as to where to move it to?
My guess is it'd be part of, um, uh, where, do you have, I think you have a section that already establishes, you've got, uh, the subsection on thirteen oh nine. That's the cost escalator piece. Um, so, yeah, it didn't make sense to have it here, because you've already got the piece on in thirteen oh nine that is specifically about how you would apply that, that cost escalation factor.
So, would it be moving it to that section or deleting it altogether because we already defined it somewhere else? Cause he's saying to move it.
Um-
You're saying it's redundant?
I'm saying some of it may be redundant, and so, in the process of moving it, um, section thirteen oh nine might need to get reworked to make it flow and, and-
We're probably not gonna get to thirteen oh nine tonight, so could you move it to thirteen oh nine for the next meeting? And then, we could adjust the whole paragraph?
Sounds good.
When you do get to thirteen oh nine, there's a comment in there about this.
Saying insert here?
I don't wanna give any spoilers.
I don't remember. Oh, yeah. That's right. He recommends booting all of it.
The entire section.
In the methodology.
Which has adjusted this whole document now, isn't it, to make the methodology, the, the map?
The methodology being the map for how a fee is set and what- is, okay, so giving the spoiler. The concern is that just using a direct cost escalation factor, um, isn't accurate, because the way the, essentially, the way the math is done to determine the base methodology is fact, is a component of both the demand based on a, a projected population or a projected need, but also the cost per unit to construct. And so, if you're using the cost escalation piece, you're only adjusting the materials cost, you're not adjusting the projected demand. Um, so, you may be over inflating or, or not inflating enough. Um, so, his recommendation is that the cost escalation be part of the methodology, because it's tied to how the fee is calculated in the first place. Um, so that if a town were to increase or decrease, it should look at and do a, a rough update of the methodology itself, plus the new materials cost. That, that's the-
That's the framework for everything, so change it from the top down.
It's a lot more work than we've been doing previously.
Mm-hmm.
A lot more work to change it that way?
Well, because you're going through the entire methodology at that point, instead of just going and applying a, a cost escalator to the material costs.
Right.
That's how Mayberry gets following business.
Right, it also, though, in terms of, yes, understandably, but on the other hand, once you have a methodology set, if we have the math that, you know, his spreadsheet and the math that he used, we can easily then say, okay, well, we know that, that there are certain numbers or factors that you can adjust. Um, essentially, your projected population or, or whatever that piece that's creating demand, um, is. Then that, you can easily update a couple of numbers, and the rest of it would then auto calculate, having those spreadsheets. Um, so, that's, it's not really that, eh, huge in the end, but yeah, it is a little bit more work.
But it would yield a more accurate, uh, number.
Yes, it would be more defensible.
Yep.
It would be more defensible that it is proportionate. Um, and so, with, I wish, I should remember the name of the court case off the top of my head. I'm not remembering it. Court case from this past, just a year ago. No, no, no. Florida. Um, federal court case that made it to the Supreme Court, um, but it was getting at offsite exactions. Um, and so, there is greater kind of scrutiny on impact fees and any other offsite exactions that come along with, uh, a development application. And there, you've gotta have the same kind of nexus and rough proportionality, um, to create, to demand those exactions that you would have for someone to, to claim hardship. So, it's, it, um, so, there's, there's a little bit, and so, I think that's part of the reason why he's promoting the more defensible methodology for updating, um, the, the cost, the schedules.
So, we do in the cost to slide into thirteen oh two zero one, would that go back to the methodology, then? Like, where he says computation of impact fee. So, is that whole section referring to methodology?
Yeah, yeah, so again, he's, he's noting that this section is more administration of the impact fee, rather than computation, is what he's saying here. He's, I think he's saying that the title-
Is wrong.
Is wrong.
But if it's administrative, so, it should belong there, where it is, because that's not the methodology.
Right, he's just recommending re-titling this.
I agree, because otherwise, it should be, if it's computation, it should be in the methodology to be consistent.
Right, so let's just, yeah, we can re-title.
Yep, that's fine. And in A, it goes back to the same issues we have before of, you don't wanna overdefine it.
Right.
And to be consistent in the document, you should follow the same path we did already?
Yes.
So, do we wanna strike one through five with something else written in A?
So, what he's saying here is, again, this kind of gets back to, um, what we talked about, we're looking at the definitions in the first portion of this, is he's saying, don't say in sta- in your ordinance which types of facilities you're gonna collect impact fees for. Go through the process of doing the methodology and determining what's defensible, and then collect your impact fee. But that's where that new definition that we pulled from statute that includes the laundry list of what you may collect an impact fee comes into play. And so, then, it's incumbent, you know, so then, the voters say, yes, planning board, please evaluate this laundry list of facility types and, and determine what is defensible and where there is a need in our community, and put forward a proposal. Um, so, then, then you would go and say, okay, well, we're only gonna collect impact fees for these three facility types, or these five facility types. Um, and then, you have, you go through that methodology, so that, yes, so he's essentially saying, strike one through five.
Well, then, in A, don't we need to reference the RSA for the definition of impact fee?
That, and/or the definition that you have, um-
I would just slide the definition in there. So, we're deleting one through five, deleting public capital facilities, and including the definition of what an impact fee is.
Okay.
In A.
Re-titling it.
You okay with that?
Yep.
Alright, yeah, and changing the title to
Mm-hmm.
Administration. Why is thirteen oh nine in yellow? Is that, are we supposed to look that up to make sure that's right? For the last half of A?
Um, hold on. It, you have, it's yellow?
Mine's yellow, unless my screen's yellow, no. Mine's highlighted.
It's yellow.
Yeah, it's yellow. Alright, yours is in yellow?
Yeah.
Mine's not yellow.
No, mine's red.
No, the thirteen oh nine. Go down.
Oh, section thirteen oh nine is yellow?
Oh, that's weird. No, the last part of A. After the public school, after number five, mine's highlighted thirteen oh nine. That's fine. I'm not crazy.
He's working on the chairman's copy, we're working on the, we're doing numbers.
It's yellow.
I don't know what the chairman's copy is, but-
Okay, so then, the rest of that is fine, cause that says referencing, um, keeping the second part of the, the impact fee schedule should be established and reviewed as set forth in section thirteen oh nine.
Right.
Which is what we have currently, even with the changes, right? That's where everything is. Review and establish of fees amended March ninety-three, March two thousand.
Yeah, the amendment date, that's just when the ordinance was amended.
Okay.
That section was. Um, for B, I would actually recommend, um, making that a little bit more generic, um, so that it would just be something, you know, referencing any, any impact fees for the public road system. This is just, um, it's just, it's citing the tri- yeah, it's citing the trip generation model, um, that should be utilized. You know what, again?
Why do you view that specific, though?
I don't think you need this, cause this is in, uh, this is part of that methodology, and you don't, I don't think you need to dictate a standard source.
Especially if the methodology is doing something different with it.
And with that standard source-
The methodology is always gonna come back to IT, the IT trip generation manual, um, the only-
Does, is trip generation-
Trip generation data there is, um, so that I know, so it's-
So, is that mentioned specifically in the methodology, or is that just generically because of the purpose of it?
I think it is mentioned in the methodology. I know that's what he uses for the basis.
So, I think we don't even need B.
So.
You agree? That's redundant?
It, it seems redundant, yeah. We're gonna have this down to two pages pretty quick.
Five font, one page.
Do they have? They got six.
They got six, and it's big print.
Over the new model.
Well, with your microprint, you might get it to five.
And I assume if we strike B, when Mr. Mayberry does a final read-through, if he says legally, there's some reason why we shouldn't strike B?
Yeah.
He'll-
Yeah, and you also, we'll send it to council before
Okay.
we do anything with it.
Okay.
There's nothing proposed in C, D, or E. You actually have two Bs, so. So, that one actually stays as B, that, c, c, and D. Cruising right along.
Are we all okay with the rest of thirteen oh one?
Yeah.
Yep, or thirteen, I'm sorry, yep, thirteen oh two, I'm sorry, thirteen oh two oh one. We're going on thirteen oh two oh two, payment of fees.
A looks good to me.
B is-
And they are paid before the certificate of occupancy? That's how we do it now? And they are paid before the certificate of occupancy. That's how we do it now.
Um.
I think you mentioned that before. Well, it has to be because this is how it's working now.
Um, this is relocated, I believe. Hold on. Thirteen oh two oh two, the phase of the fee payer. We come from. I think it's relocated from somewhere else.
I recall we wordsmithed that.
No, it wasn't in the old version. It is new.
Well, I just see a letter of credit drawn on New Hampshire Bank. So that's basically saying that the bank is. Is guaranteeing the money for the impact fee. And why have New Hampshire Bank? If a guy has a bank in Massachusetts, he can't do a letter of credit.
Harder to reach.
Oh, true.
We don't want to send Joan out of state to. Do our dirty work. Road trip.
Yeah, Jen, who's in last year's, uh, two years ago?
Huh?
That was in it two years ago.
It was?
Yep. Fifteen oh two oh two, payment of fees. It was just the A. There was no B.
Right.
It's on page five.
Yeah, it was just, just payment of fees. It was just the two nines. So I'm looking through it going, where did I get the B and why did I add this here?
Yeah, I guess.
Why would you want a letter of credit? Why don't you just mandate that the fee be paid?
Oh, 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 I see it. It's down below in thirteen oh two oh three. C one.
I guess my bigger question is why are we even doing that? The letter of credit. Why not just make the fees due to get your certificate of occupancy?
I agree.
Pay it. I mean, a letter of credit just opens up more work from the town to collect the money at a future date. So why not just say the money's out or you don't get your certificate?
Um, I can look into it. Where it's something that you're currently. Providing as an option.
Maybe if you could find out when that was added in. Has it been that way for? Since ninety-one or is that? Now, there's any history on when it was added in and why it was added in?
I don't know, but per, um. So if you look down. Further. Piece that's all appeals of planning board decisions. Impact fees shall go to the Hillsborough County Superior Court. That was adopted in ninety-three after everything. So the letter of credit may be original. Language.
It may be some tool that a developer uses as part of the financing package to do a subdivision.
Has anyone used it before?
So if I find out that you don't have to allow for that. Do you want me to delete it?
If it's unused and not required. I don't see much point to carrying it as an option. Where if a developer does decide to, um, exercise that option, we may not be prepared to handle it because we wouldn't have a. A familiarity with how to handle it. Especially where it hasn't been used.
I just get nervous a letter of credit and. And anything. So why take the chance? So thirteen oh two oh two, if we strike B. And a change made already in A, everyone's fine with both of those?
Yep.
Yep.
Appeals. Not much. Not much in A. B, C. We have a C, strike it from there too because.
Right, it's just, in this instance, it's moved.
Yeah, but we're gonna delete it, you know, the spot.
Right, and, um, if we don't need it, it will not, it'll completely disappear.
Yes.
From thirteen oh two oh two.
Which is what we want.
And you'll just see the strikeout here in thirteen oh two oh three.
Yep.
This one moved here.
And then the other change in C was just public capital facilities, which obviously if you're consistent, we're striking that. So I think thirteen oh two oh two is, oh, three, I'm sorry, is good? Everyone?
Yeah.
Thirteen oh three zero zero. What's the difference between special revenue fund and restricted fund? Is there a reason why restricted was put in there? For, um, the impact fee accounts?
It's an accounting question that we may want to bring to maybe the town administrator.
So this is, this is, um.
And whose red line is that or?
This is both Mr. Mayberry and Jason's.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayberry suggested further review of the use of the term special rev- revenue fund account. Um, I have had comments in the past that the special revenue fund has particular meaning in New Hampshire. Under other statutory provisions on municipal budget that may conflict with impact fee applications if so classified. And Jason. Then also added and said, correct, don't use special revenue. Okay, to refer to a restricted fund or funds separate from the general fund.
I think restricted fund is just easier to follow.
Yeah. Yes. So that was, that was a double affirmative on the, on the, uh, recommended change there.
Two thumbs up.
Yep.
And I'd say they both know what they're talking about, so I think we should agree.
Concurrence from the board.
Yeah, that's why I made the change and I didn't make a bubble in the.
That's not a discussion item. Alright, so thirteen oh one oh one.
Thirteen oh three oh one?
Sorry, thirteen oh three oh one. Uh, mainly it's a fund account. That's a good question. Are they five different categories or five different accounts or is it one restricted account? With tags for five different sub-accounts? Which I think the only person who would know that would be.
That question to bring Jason up.
Jason.
Yeah.
What would you recommend, Jen? Are you, are you better off having one general account?
So, so actually kind of pulling it back to, um, Mr. Mayberry's general comments. Which I marked over here in my markup that I actually made the note, but I'm not seeing the note. Um, he had said that, um. You know, as previously mentioned, the current ordinance limits the categories for which fees may be assessed in Litchfield. There's nothing wrong with such a limit, though. Any additional fee category would need to be approved at town meeting as an ordinance amended before the planning board could implement it. If retained, the list of specific impact fee accounts should include the categories of municipal office facilities. Uh, and public safety facilities because we had incorrect terminology that I fixed. Um, blah, 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 blah. So. If, so the thing is, is if you keep those specific five categories, then he recommended keeping the specific five categories here. Um, otherwise, um, I think. It, it may sep- maybe more, let's just follow up with Jason and say, can we just simply say separate accounts? Or is it one impact fee account? Total or is it separate impact, separate accounts per type of impact fee?
So are we keeping the five types of impact fees then?
You struck it earlier.
Yeah.
So.
So we're, we're not gonna.
So I'd say this.
We're not having the five.
Yeah, this should get reworked. And I need to decide, I need to find out from Jason whether, or Ja- Jason, Joan, or anyone here. Um. Whether they maintain separate accounts per fee type or.
One.
One separate restricted.
Okay. I have a question on J C twenty-four. What does that mean? Uh, maintain current address on file. So if it's paid to the town, doesn't the town? Have that? But why is it? Is it redundant to have the payer or is that the better way to do it?
No, because if the construction company paid the impact fees.
Mm-hmm.
And then they changed their address, they have to notify the town.
Okay.
Get the money back.
So we don't have that word currently that way?
It has to be, you know, so they can repay it.
Okay.
That's something that bothers me. Why do we repay it to the construction company that put it up originally?
That, it bothers me too.
And not repay it.
No, we don't. We don't. And that's one of the things that would, that's further. Down.
Be sure, because I was giving.
Thirteen oh five.
We pay it to whoever paid it, right?
Right.
Right, but I'm saying if the, if the construction company paid it.
And then sold the house.
And sold the house, they included in the cost of the house. So now the homeowner's paying it.
Right, right.
But you don't know that, so you're paying it back to the contractor.
Right, whoever paid it, right.
Right.
So spoiler alert, that's part of the conversation for thirteen oh five.
Good. You ruined everything tonight.
That's, it all depends on how far you want to go on this because it's now.
Have we passed the halfway point?
I think you passed the halfway point.
Six out of eleven. So.
You want to try to finish thirteen oh four?
We haven't even started thirteen oh four.
Oh, I'm sorry, for thirteen.
Just do thirteen oh three?
Yep, thirteen oh three oh one.
Okay.
It's pretty.
Draw the line here.
Snap a line here. Move on.
Next. Meeting. Okay. Alright, so just for me to clarify though, you want me to go through, make all the revisions that we've talked about tonight? So that the next meeting, we're looking at.
Updated copy.
Updated copy, so that those pieces like thirteen oh nine that has some spoiler, you know, that had some spoiler alerts tonight. Um, has the revised version.
And if it's reflecting back to what we've done already, it should reflect what's accurate.
Yeah.
So in thirteen oh three oh one, are we keeping the payer needs to maintain, are we defining that more?
Okay.
Because we already did the, A, we did already. We need to find out how the accounting for it.
So thirteen oh three oh one is really focused on collecting the fees and the record keeping. Um, and not. They go back to. We keep in mind it says, and shall maintain an updated record of the current ownership. And tax map reference numbers for properties for which fees have been paid. So that's getting at the.
Who owns the obligation now?
Yeah, the, the spoiler alerts for thirteen oh five. In which case this comment on twenty-four, that's an old comment. Or it's a, kind of carried it forward from our past conversation. My markup's here.
So C reflects thirteen oh five?
Yes.
So should we? Wait for C until we discuss thirteen oh five and go back to it because if it is tied together?
As written here, C seems to make sense to me.
Yeah.
Did you want, and put something in specifically about maintaining the current address on file, the payer or the comment you put in?
Um, okay, so that, this is.
Or is oh five take care of it?
Hold on, so the, the comment twenty-four was just a flag to say, listen, and, and payer may not be the right. Term. Um, so the, this was reflecting the conversation that the board had previously that. It's incumbent upon whoever the current owner is or the payer or whoever. That fee belongs to, um, it's incumbent upon them to make sure that their records are up to date. Um, as opposed to the town having to run around and track and chase and figure out. Who it is, what the address is, that said that it's usually already in the assessing data if you're going with the current owner, so. So it shouldn't be an issue. So I would say C is fine the way it is. Um, I think the concern was that. By having the term and shall maintain an updated record, that it's now. The burden is on.
The property owner or whoever the payer.
The burden's on the town to maintain that record as opposed to. The property owner.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So let me, let me look at that and see about that particular phrase. There's a better way to. State that and who's got the workload obligation. That's the main concern. Let's flag there.
So in D, we're adding Jason to that? So in D, we're adding Jason to that?
Um...
Makes sense that they do it together, because
Yeah.
they're both involved with it anyway.
I guess back when this was originally written, we didn't have a town administrator.
Yep.
So it makes sense to fold him into the mix.
Are you suggesting we define report as the town report showing fee and interest?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that you can specify.
More specific.
Yeah, we can make more specific.
I think it's a good idea since it is money. Should know where it's allocated to. Make sure to include fee and interest accumulated for it, that should be important too.
All right.
And he said review with Jason and Linda, transaction summarized by Jason, balanced by treasure. Was that agreed upon by the two of them as to how they do it?
I, yeah, I need to double check it.
Okay.
With them, no.
Makes sense to me, but...
I don't know if you want to get that specific.
No. Well, they, they do their job. That's what they're hard for, so.
Yeah, that's not even, that's his old notes.
Okay.
It's Karen.
So we're going to table thirteen oh four zero zero, we'll start there next time.
Snap the line here and claim victory for the evening.
Moving forward.
All right. Next on the agenda is the... Is the close-up memo for the agricultural overlay draft.
I'm okay pushing that to the next meeting if you want to, since it's late.
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Move that to the fifteenth?
Sure.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the minutes for the March eighteenth meeting, which were extensive and very well-written. And if you did not read them up to this point, you cannot vote on them, because they're twenty pages long. So hopefully, I assume we all read them already.
Yeah.
The honor, the only thing I saw was in the last one, the secretary of clerk.
What page?
Mike Proto, the ballot.
The annual meeting.
Where are you?
Last page. Page twenty. Under the offices. Your secretary of clerk.
Secretary should be slash clerk. Secretary.
Yeah, secretary slash clerk in both places.
I gotta say, Donnie did a very good job with the minutes, and maybe if there's a place for future meetings that we could keep these minutes there because they do great synopsis of what he covered. So when we talk about impact fees next with him, link, link these minutes, so.
They'll be on that site, but you want to link them to someplace else?
Maybe the next meeting agenda?
Oh.
Where we talk about it again, so that we have those with us, because it's a great way to do a quick reference.
I, I can, if you want, I can just add him, a link to them.
As a PDF, yeah.
As a P, yeah, as a PDF, or even just linking to this document on the impact fee page, so it just stays on that impact fee page that carries forward.
It's a great searchable document.
From meeting to meeting, okay.
Good, thank you.
I'll make it easy.
At the very top, I did catch something that I'm questioning. Planning board public hearing? I thought it was just a regular meeting. Was it a hearing?
Where are you?
Right up at the very top, the title of, of the minutes.
Oh, planning board public.
Oh, I probably just didn't change it.
Yeah, public meeting.
Good catch. That was all I caught. You did a great job with these, Donnie.
Thank you.
You can take the next week off.
Thank you.
No, it's a great reference material, because it's, I mean, he gave so much information, so.
Okay. I wonder if we should send him a copy?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And assuming we approve them at this meeting, we can send them the approved copy.
Yeah, just for ref, for reference.
So I'll wait until you have the approved version to post the link.
Yeah, but motion for the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from March eighteenth, as amended?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need to abstain.
Opposed. The abstain passes three zero one. Any other business you want to bring up this evening?
Um, I sent you this notice about this water, drinking water source protection conference today. Sent it out. I have the agenda if anybody wants to look at it. There was one section that looked pretty interesting. New land conservation plan for the Merameack watershed. Because the Merameack watershed is supposed to be very impacted the next twenty years.
Ouch, I might cut off.
It's usually a really good conference, but it's usually during
I've been to one.
a weekday, isn't it?
It's Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah. It makes it tougher for board members to get to.
Yeah, I may be out of town that week.
I might be interested, I've been to one before, I might be interested in going. But you have to make it mindful, as they say, it fills up fast, and I'm sure it does.
It should be okay.
Hmm?
It should be okay.
Yeah, that's all I have. Oh, I have, Jen just gave me the disk for two thousand fourteen changes. So should I pick them up in a PDF to put them on my computer?
You've got Word files and PDF files on there.
What's better to put on the?
On the website?
Not on the computer.
On the computer?
On my computer.
On your own personal computer?
Yeah.
Whichever version you want.
What's the difference?
PDF you can't change.
One you can edit, the other you can't.
So do you want a cop, do you want this on your laptop, or do you?
Is that the twenty fourteen?
It's in your Dropbox.
The twenty thirteen, I thought it had a thirteen one.
Just updated it today.
Fourteen.
Okay.
Oh, did you put it on the site?
I, no, it's not on the Google site. I keep a, for myself, a Dropbox folder, so I can have it on my iPad, so it's like cloud storage.
You're way over my head.
I know, it's like...
I was moving.
So Mike said, wait, you have, can you share the folder? So I shared the folder with him.
I move stuff around and I was...
And you want me to share that folder with you, I can, or we, they're usually on the town, they're on the town's, all of the town's website.
Well, that usually takes a while.
So, right.
On the town website, it's a PDF.
Correct.
Okay. If you, um, I was worried Dropbox, I move stuff around, and I didn't know if I touch things, does that go back to you?
Yes.
Oh, shoot. Sorry.
So you obliterated all of them?
No, no, I didn't, I didn't. Are they all still there?
I put them all back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, some mental note.
I checked.
Oh, yeah, so if we're shared, we're real-time to each other.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yes.
Now I do.
So if you delete one?
I would put it on my hard drive. I just move stuff around, just so it wouldn't have to be online.
If you drag and drop from Dropbox to your hard drive, it, it literally takes them from your Dropbox and puts them on your hard drive and it removes them from the Dropbox.
Sorry.
That's okay. I had to update them anyways, because I had done the updates, so it was okay.
Dropbox.
But you could copy it though, right? I could right-click, copy the file, or download it from Dropbox to you.
Yes.
You can't just drag it, because I dragged it as an icon, which is why it went poof. Okay. It was gone. And I just can't remember how many docs were in there, I'm like, oh.
I opened the folder to overwrite the zoning ordinance with the updates, and they're all gone.
I won't do that again, I promise.
It's okay.
Hey, you want to pass that disk, I'll copy off what I want off of it.
There you go.
Yeah, I had, I copied, and I went back to try and get the zoning, and I, the disk wasn't working right or something.
John, I'll grab it from you someday that you're...
Just take a minute.
And how long would it take to go on the website? It would be on the website eventually?
Months.
Eventually, yeah.
Oh, the bylaws were missing from the website too, so we need to give them the updated zoning plus the bylaws.
And, and the bylaws are on the other ones?
The bylaws are on the CD.
Ooh, there's a lot on this disk.
It's everything.
Ooh. Copy all.
Yeah, but if you do that, you get both versions, PDF and Word?
Yes.
That's fine. I've got plenty of space.
Maybe I should go back.
Only the zoning ordinance, that's kind of hefty. Cloud storage.
And that's one I didn't get. I went back to get it, and the, the CD was acting really weird. I tried to open it and close it.
Ethel? The New Hampshire Office of Energy and Planning has announced their twentieth annual spring planning and zoning conference. It'll be held on Saturday, May third, at the Mountain View Grand Resort in Whitefield, New Hampshire.
I'll go if I can stay over.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend, but when I have attended in the past, I found this to be a very valuable experience.
Yeah, it's...
Last year was very informative.
Yeah.
It's very worth going, and the Mountain View Grand is absolutely gorgeous.
So if anyone from the board intends to go, please fill us all in on what you've learned after you get back.
You couldn't get there for eight thirty, so you'd have to stay over.
Yeah, no kidding.
I think they have discounted where it's going to be requested in Tampa.
As many years as I've been up there, I've never found that place.
That's all I've got. I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Passes four zero zero. Our next meeting will be April fifteenth. Good night.